Call a special board meeting. Selectmen to order at four o'clock, four P M. Friday, March first, welcome Friday, or welcome to March. Okay. Anyone have any comments regarding the festivities around the agenda? Anything else about? All right, well, budget discussion will go right to the following. We can actually move the Kent Library so they're in our grant.
So.
That'd be nice.
Yes, absolutely, because, you know, the other people that aren't showing up. So, so we'll let you, any presentation you would like to give us? We can slide on the ladder.
Thank you. I know I'm the president of the board and we annually request a grant from the town, which we're very grateful for, but you know, we are a private library association. We're five one C three, so you know, the town grant helps provide a platform for us, but we have to raise the, it ends up being about thirty, thirty-two percent of our little bit of our operating budget and then the library relying on our staff as well as an army of volunteers. We have to raise the other seventy percent of it and we do that through four main fundraisers that are very volunteer as we are proud that we have the number one volunteer per capita of all libraries in the state. That's all libraries.
I actually think it's per capita.
Per capita.
I don't think it's per capita for volunteers. No, it's just a number. It's just a huge, huge number.
Okay, so that is how we get by, but it's not easy. You know, just even this year, you know, one of our, we have four fundraisers. One is a car raffle, but we have several people in the committee who are approaching ninety and it's hard for them, so we don't take it for granted. And we're happy what we get, but you know, I think we said in the letter, you know, thirty percent are what we're getting is about fifth from the bottom of Connecticut. Some of that is libraries who have really big endowments. We are growing our endowment, but it's not huge. So, and you know, we're also trying to raise money mostly privately to expand the library and renovate the firehouse, but that's really separate from our operating budget and I just always want the town to know that. So, so and then, you know, we kept it flat this year. We knew there was a transition and we just thought that would be considerate for your planning for this year. And so hundred thirty-five thousand is what we had requested and gotten last year. So I'm happy to answer questions, but that's what I do.
You have any questions? Yeah, so I don't either. I think you guys have a wonderful job. We're happy to participate, you know, to support you for sure. I also appreciate the opportunity to come over with the library help and the youth to work with the second graders on civics lessons. And actually, I talked about that in our last meeting, because they actually budgeted more money better than we did, but in the animal fund, we got a lot of money. They all liked animals, but, but no, but seriously, you guys do a tremendous amount of events and they're really appreciative of the talent, the collaboration, cooperation with our Parker Rec as well. You know, I know it's going to grow. The new director looks really to want to jump in on that and that's great too. So I think it's money well invested. I don't consider spending, I don't consider investing that we do with you as a public-private partnership. We're happy to do that. I think all of us are agreeing on that for sure.
For sure. We do have a meeting next week actually with Park and Rec to talk about, you know, bringing him in and connecting with the staff at the library, making sure that we're really taking advantage of that relationship, which has been growing in the last three or four years. So we hope to continue to build these programs that we can use each other as resources and databases and all that sort of stuff. The other thing we are really grateful for the town for is use of the community house. So whenever we, part of our constraint at the library is space. So when we have a large program, the fact that the town has allowed us to use the community house when we need it has been incredibly valuable.
For free.
For free, yes. And we have a couple of things on the docket. We don't know how big they'll get, but it's wonderful to know that we have either the town hall or the community house as a resource to be able to bring people in. You know, in a perfect world, we'll bring them into the actual library, but we're not there yet and until that time, we are just so grateful.
Wish you best and soon as I win that call.
One, two.
I want you to this year, yeah.
Okay, well, I handed you a list of sort of statistical roundup of cool stuff that we're proud of for twenty twenty-three. It was, you know, a good year. We're still, as all libraries are, coming back from COVID. That was a real challenge for all of us, especially those of us that are here in downtown San Diego, a public building, people, people really stopped gathering. So we haven't quite gotten back to pre-COVID levels, but every year we're just incrementally getting back. So that's been really nice to see. And again, with all these collaborations that we have with different organizations, we do a lot of things off-site too. A lot of things, we're now doing a lot of things outside. The town gave us a fabulous grant last year to be able to purchase a lot of equipment to do things outside. Part of our building program for the expansion involves outside, keeping people sort of safe and comfortable. We want them to be, you know, on, on library grounds and learning about our resources and the, we're in the same way that social media, you try to reach people the way they want to be reached. We try to have programs in ways that people want to attend and that where they feel safe and they feel heard, like it's things that they're interested in and we endeavor to continue to expand as, as much as we can.
We're doing something at the senior center, right? At Temple?
We do, yes, we are. We're now running a regular book group at the senior center, so that was something that was passed.
To go onsite there.
Yep, yep, and any opportunity we have to collaborate with them, we, we jump on because it's especially the community that can't quite make it all the way over to the library during the day. It just, it brings it to them and that's been going really well.
That's, I think, one of our own goals here is to use and incorporate as much as we can of everything we can there in town, including all of our facilities and as well as the public credit. You guys are, you know, the rock stars, you really are here in town like that.
Thank you.
Okay, well, feel free to peruse our staff. We're happy about them. Lynn has a copy of the budget. There is also available with Barbara if anyone else needs it and we're so grateful. Thank you.
So this procedurally goes to the Board of Finance next and then it goes to the town in May and then we know it's done.
Yeah, I'll have a hearing and then the town.
Okay.
Third week in May.
And I know that we've got a program all about democracy and health collections.
So, yes, so with Marty and Darlene, they're going to be doing a whole presentation about how government works. And one of the things we, we were talking about today in our community outreach meeting was the fact that a lot of people in town don't necessarily know who to call about what or who's responsible for what. There's, you know, lots of chatter about people drive too fast during, on, you know, down Main Street, why can't the town do something? Well, because the town doesn't own the street, you know?
The whole town.
So, but I mean, there's things like that, that's sort of the process of government that people need to understand is they need to know who to call and who to complain to or who to congratulate about.
The town halls style, you know, it's different than what we had in New York growing up and we're not a lot, a lot of other places that might not be familiar with this, even though they play, coming out on weekends and now being here more often, it's a different process, but people are learning because I was on the phone all day. And they say like this, they're very accustomed to me asking questions, and it was because there were big questions, but.
We're happy to post that. Yes.
Yeah, and thank you, thank you for coming.
Thank you, thank you for giving us the opportunity. Thanks. Okay, okay. Just miss. All right, girls.
Do I just cruise down the whole list of conservative grants? People have not, have any. Yeah, would you like to? Thank you. Yeah, the first, the, we all saw, and I can talk to Northwest Shore Service. They're certainly able to come to me. Either I was the Northwest Connecticut Transit District, they don't work after two hours in a lot of the days, so. And I did talk to, I talked to the Transit District for sure. We've had a lot of talks, those meetings and then, but, so we'll have the partner coming in Tuesday.
Services Bureau.
They're actually going down a little bit, which is nice, but they're doing much more. They're also, I think, working, looking to work with Park and Recs too.
Yeah, they have.
They have been in the past, right? They're looking to do more. I think I told you all that last Friday, Sam and I went up to meet the Kelly, or the new, well, I shouldn't say new director, but newish director and get an idea of what they're doing and they seem to be doing a lot with Kent. The presentation is pretty nice for, you know, what they have done, so that's good. Any questions or anything else? I mean, Greenwood's, you know, we know what they do. They're psychological training, or a counseling center. There's one up quite a bit and they have their explanation in here. You know, I don't know, if we can.
Should I ask you a question? All Shore and Greens at the same time, because I read their letters. You know, and Shore said that they were getting less, less federal funding, thirty-three percent, yet they're asking for an increase from us of sixty-six percent, whereas Greenwood's, they said that they have, they're seeing more, they're seeing an uptick in the number of people seeking their, their assistance of twenty-five percent and then their, their grant request went up twenty-five percent. So it seems to me like Greenwood's had, had a rationale to go to, they're knowing that, but maybe not so much Shore. I was, I was wondering.
Did you talk to Shore or not?
I never got home, no. If I do, but never, never heard back from.
Because they're, they merged with Litchfield Hills Shore. So they're, they're now thirteen towns plus they've taken on Norfolk. So they're, they're expanding the reach of the organization.
So, so there are so many two towns.
Financial, I mean, it sounded like there's financial changes.
Yes.
So maybe they, with the reorganization, they've realized that they need to change the finances.
So I wonder if they were asking for sixty-six percent of all of these towns with the thought that maybe some of these towns would go to that level and some won't? I, I mean, I, I was trying to figure out why sixty-seven, sixty-six percent.
So you called them and they didn't even call you back?
Well, we sent an email, I should say, they called. I sent an email and I haven't seen an answer back. I know Judy Perkins is part of their group.
Our rep.
Yeah, I should have done her, I didn't. It was late in the week that I did check to make sure. Yeah, it's on me to make sure that they're here and I didn't. But we did all of a sudden last week with Joyce, I think I probably let it go too long to actually ask Shore Services. I know personally, we did contact the Shore Services because my mother-in-law and they're very busy and they were unable to provide some of the support that we're looking for. They're very specific to Chores, they don't do personal support, you know, yeah, so.
Yeah, they don't do medical stuff.
Help you get dressed or, you know, to showers and all that stuff. So that was some of the things we really needed more than we ever had to clean the house. But, so there, I think you're right, you're absolutely spot on that they're, that they merged and they're relooking at where they can actually focus their support. That's what I understood when they talked to them. To, when we, actually Kathleen, when I ever talked to, I'm not sure, I don't remember the woman's name, but about potentially coming into, you know, to the town. So, but yeah, and, and, you know, the answer, I looked at all this and I think there's a time when we can say we can do this much of an increase, but not necessarily the whole increase. I know that maybe potentially until we get more information, the tax we take, I would not be, I would be in favor of that, to be honest with you right now. I mean, you're right, sixty-six percent is that everybody's sixty-six. I don't know, that's a good question, that's a good question, yes.
I think we've gone up in the past, from five thousand to six thousand and, you know, but this is an even bigger increase. And I forget what they asked for when we decided on it two years ago, but.
Yeah, because I'm wondering if they asked, I, it's sticking in my brain, they, they may have asked for a higher amount and you guys cut it back.
They may have, yes. So if that's the case, that, you know, this would not be unprecedented if we, you know, not go up to ten, but, but if they are, I mean, if, if they do need assistance, I'm open, I'm open to an increase. I just don't know about.
The services they provide are really, really helpful.
Yeah.
And I mean, I can say that from my parents, they've used two different Shore Service people. One, a guy came and helped my mom with her gardening and another, she literally has a cleaning person helping her now. So the people that are needing this are getting a lot of wonderful help and the neat thing is, is the people who are working for them have jobs.
Yeah.
So it's like, it's like a really cool symbiotic thing here and they, you know, they, they need the municipalities to make it work.
It's important for us to support them. I just want to figure out how much is, is the, is the question.
So the same with the grants itself, you know, it's actually, well, because we took the cemetery out, that did lower that number, so, but there are significant increases. And, and I don't know Greenwood's well at all. I mean, I read their brochures and.
They've, they've, they've really expanded their services.
Yeah, that letter was pretty scripted.
They used to just be referral and now they're actually doing much more than just referral. They're actually, I mean, they came out here, I went to, into a workshop that they did here for them. They were part of, I believe it was the Narcan.
Right, right, remember it, right?
They're doing more than just referrals, so. And I know that they're, they're also, they, at one point, they had somebody working at South Ken School providing counseling services. It was a contracted thing, so they're, they're expanding their business model too, so they're doing a lot.
To an extent, but more of the same. So they're getting, they're getting into nonprofits and, and everything I do is, is very positive, so.
I mean, I don't see how we cannot, I mean, mental, mental health issues are big right now and I, and they're, they're probably, I don't think we could even doubt the fact that their, their requests are probably.
Oh, I mean, just, you know, the write-up was pretty good and, you know, clinicians actually, they talk about it, they're bringing in a new personnel and so on and, and knowing, you know, just how that affects budgets and to the.
Yeah, I thought their write-up was weird and, you know, they had a number and, you know, they asked us to go to that, to go up to that number, that percentage, so it was logical to me.
Absolutely. Now, you know, LCD is going to have an increase somewhere to have because of banning personnel and that's a big expense that we all know, we've been discussing that.
Is LCD, do you have a number from them?
They had a, having a meeting, they had a meeting like last night, I, we did have a preliminary, it's in, I think it's in there.
Five, six, five, that's on the cap now.
It's per capita, it's, it's not a super increase, but it is an increase, but they're also, well, talk to them later, but I mean, about them, but they're also, yeah, they just had their final board meeting and the adoption of the budget last night, so. I worked on that as part of the finance committee somehow, Gene, it's a little side of board, it's, but it's fine, get to know, but it actually is good because I know two people around the, the twenty-first board as well, so. But I'm, I'm okay with looking at the increases on, you know, especially on Shore Services. You know, and, and, you know, I can't argue with, with any kind of psychological support coming out of post COVID, we were not there yet total, totally, you know, so, yeah, I mean, I'm, I mean, you know, moving chess pieces around here, but.
And we will, we will talk to Rural Transit and Paramedic.
Well, you talked to them, did you talk to them about why?
It did, their increase was cost of the time to hire people, the numbers and personnel that they have to have to drive the updates and new vehicles for Rural Transit and all it has to do, and, and to keep their schedule, which Joyce and I were on that call, to just all the costs of insurance, everything else that's gone on, it's really nailed them, especially the number of people that they have to have onboard to be able to drive. So they have to have people standing by, they have to have vehicles standing by to make up for what S I might not make, or, you know, what routes they may not make, excuse me. They did take and try to charge us additional money for special trips, you know, like if you're going to a zoo or you live someplace like that, we did not take any, so they took that off their initial billing to us, but next year, that was this past year, next year, they say that they're trying to bring more of that into the regular cost so that they can get people out, the cost of driving here, because we're, we're kind of spur in the middle of nowhere, the way they talk about, they actually go from Torrance to Danbury, New Milford and then up here and then they go north and then back to Waterbury, Danbury, Torrance, then back up here. So the time and having the vehicles available and the drivers is what they said was a regular increase to have there for our regular work, our work weekday pickups, they do Wednesdays. They did say they would advertise the better, so that's what people understood. If they needed a ride, they would work with us on, with that increase, people to try to get outdoor rides as part of the regular process, not as any special rides, actually get people down to shopping, follow the doctors and so on, so, which is what.
So Wednesdays will be the Kent.
Wednesdays will be the Kent day and maybe some additional, if they're coming Sharon and they're going south and they can pick additional people up, we'll kind of try to do that in advance. The big issue like anything, when you schedule transportation, it's the weather and who shows up and whether the vehicles, you know, is able to go and so on, so.
How many of our residents use this service?
They actually had a number, they had over two hundred and thirty, I think. Joyce, do you remember the number? It's like two hundred and thirty rides they had, which are pretty big riders and, and over the course of their forty-eight weeks, whatever they were using, I think that was a number, I don't know if George has the numbers.
Two hundred and thirty rides for, in roughly one, one person to ride or a couple of people?
Usually come, usually, it's, oftentimes it's full. I mean, if they come out of Mountside or Morningside or they picked up other people for.
And what's, what's full?
How many others?
It's like fourteen.
It's fourteen, I think it's a little less because of the, I need, yeah, I think it's twelve actually for the handicap, for the, and the wheelchair piece that goes up and so, so it's still a good number.
That's a good, it is a good number when they get down here.
We have it dedicated on Wednesdays, so one of twenty percent is dedicated to us, one vehicle and a driver, so.
And they guaranteed us that they're going to be able to provide that.
They did, they did, yeah, because I was, with an increase like this, if we're going to be a crapshoot, we're going to show up or, but they're planning on to continue that and like I said, increase if they can get people, the big thing is getting people dropped off a doctor's appointment, going to lunch or, or shopping and picking that person up. It all depends on the circuit that they have to do and they're, they're limited by drivers and insurance. It's not like, you know, we have, like you guys have, we're choosing school bus, you can make a different trip as you need to. They're obligated because of their contract with their, their drivers as well as the bus and, and where they have to go and how they have to get it back and so on, so.
Are they limited to only seniors or could it be anybody that uses it?
It's, it's, because they could use it for rec or something or younger, you know, younger seniors, whatever, you guys, not me.
So, so two hundred and thirty rides, if it's, if every one of those is full, fourteen, I mean, that's, that's, that's a lot of it.
I know they're not optional, because I know from personal experience, they took my dad and he was the only one.
So it'd be fifteen hundred people, up to three thousand.
Yeah, it's a little less, I think it's closer to a thousand.
A thousand.
By the time, because there's a lot of, there are one or two people at most.
Okay.
Yeah, but they do have it and that's the thing, is it guaranteed that we would continue the service, they would not be cutting any days or hours, it's just that they have, they have to go through a reorganization process as well. They're moving to a new building, that's another, that's another expense, forget that, they're having to redo their, their bus garage area, the maintenance area, and they have a new building too. So part of this increase is to cover, yeah, so, yeah, that's a part.
So what you're saying is that this twelve thousand, three twenty-five might not be at this level.
When you look at it, it's not keeping that up that high.
If it's a, if it's a, one shot deal that comes down to maybe six thousand.
Right, maybe a little more.
With insurance, but if, but if some of it is actual new building.
Yes, someone had to do with that, someone had to do with all their, their personnel and so on that they're doing.
And is that a per capita thing, then how are they charging?
They do, they charge per, per town, per capita, on, on the town itself, so, yeah, so it isn't.
So this is based on?
It's, yeah, it's, it's not, it's a number, yeah, over people as well, yeah.
Okay.
But a lot of it, I think, is hap, this year specifically, has to do with their renovations and the new construction of the garage and all that stuff, so. And it's, it's all operating funds, I mean, they have to, like the library, they have to, they get state funding and all, so I think. I should, well, I can look up their thing, but their number is exactly what the percentage is of this versus what they get from federal. I think it's eighty-three percent, because you did have that.
Yes, their letter confirmed they get seventeen from local and eighty-three federal.
I think so, yeah, that's, thank you, yeah. So, anyway, so, yeah, so I would look definitely at, again, if we do need special buses and we want to use special buses, that will pay if we go on that one, but they're not going to charge us. Last year they had a shortfall, I don't, I don't, was, kind of danced around exactly what, why they had the shortfall in their accounting, but when they tried to charge everybody for it, wait a second, you know, I said.
They had like all kinds of issues, everything I heard from Samantha and others was they had issues where they couldn't fulfill ride requests.
Ride requests, right.
Because they didn't have enough drivers.
That's part of why they've increased the numbers and so on and they have to pay more to get people in and keep them, that's a big thing, they don't show up, unfortunately. But, yeah, there was, yeah. Yeah, it is right, but here's a dedicated bus for us so that we'll, we certainly can, you know, move more of the people for a non-special, you know, be on lease shopping or, or doctor's appointments and so on, as long as it works out within their, the time period, they have to be on the road and they have to come, coming over here, coming back and so on, so.
So did they, are they to a point now where they can do special trips for an initial season?
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Can you get them to get much?
Yeah, they, that's why they were doing it one time and they were, it was from July to, to end of September, October, and I'm like, why are they doing it then? Why are you building this now? He backed right off, I mean, he's like, oh, you, you shouldn't have got the letter. I got two of them, so, so as long as you want, not while we're, but he was very good, he spent time with Stockton, so he explained more of that background and then including the construction costs and so on. But, yeah, he, he did say that they are available to do special trips, they will be doing that, but, yeah, that will be built as we go, I think, and not, that was a shortfall they had and they were trying to get us all to make up for it. Yes, it does, that could happen in ten, so, anyway.
So is this number, is this a new number compared to?
Ten thousand?
The twelve thousand, three hundred and fifty-five.
Oh, yeah, sorry, yes, that is a new number. Quite a significant increase. The cost of model for them as well, but, yeah, but we know that, that, you know, yeah, extremely large amount. But again, we, we need that bus, so if we do not have a handicap available, large passenger or a small passenger van, you guys all know about that, you know, what it stands for other things, so we'd like to be able to use that, that maybe where we could save some money on special events if we don't, you know, if, not that we ever want to restrict anyone, but if there's a group that, or inventory, we might be able to, to look at doing that if we can. Close with our, with our school, I'm sure we can, make sure.
Call ourselves, yes, we need this.
Right, and the only, eighty-five percent of the elder nutrition program, we saw that write-up, that was just a small increase, number of eyes and of course, percentage of eyes. So, and the big, obviously overall percentage increases are, and we still need, and the other part is, you know, there are a lot more initiatives coming in, I say that with tongue in cheek, but coming out of legislature to be able to provide more rural transport and buses and so on, that's one of the big push, oh, yeah, there's a lot of, I don't know where it's going to go with the bills, but in consideration, I'm looking at another slew of bills that came out today, they're looking for, you know, responses and stuff, but the other rural transit coming from federal government, part of, I think, the inflation reduction act as well and so, I don't think it's our part, it's the place reduction act, but they're doing roads and doing infrastructure a lot with that, but come on, so. Literally, honestly, I think, literally, literacy volunteers, that was a nice drop, but.
So the paramedic continues to ride, so.
Yeah, yeah, and when we talked about like what to put in there, it was like, let's try to go with, you know, the actual, what we have to do for the paramedics and, and, but what we did with the, with new vans, we should, new vans just got bought out.
We started myself, so.
Yeah, I don't know that, we'll know, but right now, they have agreed not to increase the percentage, I mean, there's a little bit different numbers that we get, but Barbara's telling me the number is a little bit higher than what they had sent the letter to us of review, if we had that in there.
Because this, yeah, if it hasn't changed, why?
Well, they said there's not going to be change also, but not planning to change the amount for this year. It's not there?
It's forty-one.
There was a letter when they, they sent that to us. They just say they, they had agreed to hold price, their whole cost at, parameters at this year's level, so.
But it's shot at thirteen point. But it's shot at thirteen point eight nine percent increase.
Right, which, well, that's, yeah, we didn't actually show the actual last year.
I understand that, that was a mess up, so I was like, I hope we're double checking, triple checking the numbers.
We did, yeah, that's, well, that's what we did, that's when we got that, that, that background, you know, but I'll get all that too. Um, but yeah, um, yeah, see things, and I think they're on the, on the website, and I've got, I have another email or something. But, yeah, we have to shoot it there, but that is, yeah, we're actually, that and of course, EMS.
So who's responsible for making sure it gets in this fold? But, but it's not Barbara?
Joyce, we we get, you know, some of the stuff comes to me, I send it to Barbara, uh, background. Joyce might get the same thing, you know, might come in, like, matter of going to the first public office or something. Uh, and then we try to get it in that way, she's pretty good at it, I think, because there's a couple of things that are, like, totally included. Oh, well, um, yeah, so mark anything, we'll go back, I'll make sure there's, because there's one addition to, I believe it was. Sure Services that had, that was not in there as well, it's, yeah, make sure we have that background. Um, there, I think there's a breakdown in towns, whatever. But yeah, it's our responsibility to make that in, so she'll be putting it out that, there.
Well, do you want us to approve or?
If you want to, we can do that, or we can do it all at one time later, and if you'd like to approve this, we, we'll just do it as a bottom line later. I thought we'd have a chance, like by Wednesday, to go back, and if there was any follow up questions, if there was any background material we didn't have that we had, that we could track down, get that in. And, and because Wednesday really, or Wednesday, we have to go Thursday.
So what do we need, and what other information do we need, paramedics, or we?
Yeah, I mean, I wanna know, I just wanna make sure we're, we're checking it, because it was a big, big flag.
Right, well, we did, and, but that'll make sure that's, because we do, did have the letter from uh, from the uh, Vavance and others who talked about. Where they're holding the line on cost for this year, I think the COG had that as well. It wasn't, anyway, helped to find that, it was an email or a letter that came in, so.
So of all of this, of all the grants on associations, two forty one paramedic, that we need more information?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we want to, do we want to adjust any of these that are currently here, do we want to act on these?
Today or not?
That's what I do.
It's good, you guys, it's a stereo, uh, we can, I'm, I'm, I'm willing to do that, especially if nothing's gonna change, I mean, nothing is planned to be changed. We have a flat, our budget that's sooner or if there's any.
I don't wanna act on the associations without, like, I don't wanna, I would love to do them all, but I don't wanna do that without the paramedic information.
Well, then, let's wait.
And I wonder if you guys feel okay about the chore service, or if you wanna see more detail on it.
No, I mean.
I'll say this about the grants, if, by May, I'll, I would have been more comfortable with chore if it were eight thousand. Because we just came down a little, uh, in line with the percentage.
Or, or hearing from them.
Or hearing, if we want, if we want to do that as well, we could hear from that.
There is an email or something from, further explaining.
And I don't know if we want to approve all these at the same time or go line by line, but I'm definitely recusing myself to twenty six, that library association, so. However, you wanna do this?
I can vote out, we can build that association right now, get that off the books, if you want. We can, we can, we can deal with them because it came to us today.
Easy.
Yeah, very easy.
I think the motion that you approve, uh, the, what is this? Two twenty six for the Kent Library Associations, or a zero percent increase on it, where you're at.
I'll second that.
And I will recuse myself right now.
I'll sit over here. Okay, any more discussion on that? No, okay, I'll take it. I, I'd like to go back actually and get more from the chore services, just to follow up on that, and ask that question, like you had, what sixty six, is that everyone already getting it?
Everybody knows.
Um, and I think Greenwoods is okay, you know, they did a pretty good explanation, the clinician that they hired and so on. Rural Transit, if we had, I don't, I don't think we're gonna get any more on, I'll be honest with you.
That's, that's, that's such a big number that we kind of need more information.
Well, if you want a further breakdown, but I, yeah, they could, they know, yeah, okay.
I'd like a breakdown, you know, I mean, how much is going to a new building, and how much is the insurance?
Breakdown, they can give us that, probably.
Yeah.
Yeah, they really didn't give us much.
No, they did, actually, I mean, it's a bill, or a bill for, you know, twelve thousand. Yeah, I'd like more there, yeah. Okay, and. Paramedics, I'll get more, I'll get you the information, the paramedics, I think we have what you guys are looking for. And then we can, I think we can deal with it, both the grants and associations, at minus two twenty six.
Do we have information from one, the two Lake Worms, it says placeholder?
No, haven't heard anything from, Barbara did tell me, no, I said, you know, in the past, this happened, and she said, yes. Like, when we started with inter-local, uh, local commission, both these are part of a cost shared agreement with Washington Warren, it's just look for the numbers to come in late. Leave the lines and what they are for now, so, again, that'll be one, we can, when we do it, I'll make sure there's some information, tell them, add some information by Wednesday. Least before I can go forward with anything more than that.
I just know in the past, we was about caught short because they had an expense that they, we didn't know about at this point.
Partly like a boat, yeah, boat, right, oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, well, this one is not boat, but there are, there's talk about what they do with the survey, the whole idea about the, you know, environmental effect of weight, you know. Hard wakes on the shoreline, um, right now, it's just a study. Waiting for that information, there's over seven hundred, I think I mentioned, like, seven hundred responses, uh, which are good, I gave him the numbers that we had, that I could give him. Off of our council contacts, uh, to Sean Hayden, their director, so I don't know what they're gonna add, uh, if they're gonna add anything to that, if that's what they're waiting for. Uh, Sean hasn't given a good answer on that one, but, but I'll ask, and I'll ask also, um, uh. Jim Britton and Greg LaCobb, if you've heard anything else, since they're the two or the other.
And do we have a representative to these, either of these groups from Kent?
We had, Kevin Brady was on it for a while, um.
Who's currently, do we have?
Not sure, that's a good question, we do, I mean, you said we do, and then the three select boards and the selectmen have, have.
But that's more informal, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, exactly, it's, you know, like, to do things like the survey, so it's not actually voting members and all that. They have, there's something I just saw, with one of the guys that's in Warren, he's just up the line from us. Who's on the commission, they have a couple workshop or committees as well, but, you know, I'll, we'll get more information on that for sure. Breakdown as to exactly their plan and doing it before we get stuck with another boat.
And the council of the boroughs and maybe the town river commission, both same placeholder?
Yeah. Um, you talking about the H Council? I need to go back and look at that, I thought that they had sent us a, our dues, and I believe it's the same, if I remember right, so. I'll check, I'll check with that. Joyce, if you're on, did you, did you see anything come across, or did I say you anything about that?
I did not.
Yeah, let me check on that, we've been looking at old, seeing out a lot of old emails too, I wanna make sure it's, it's twenty three versus twenty four. But I'll check on that. I think we lost second grants and and associations.
Do we need, do you think we got something on the river commission as well?
I, I don't know anything about that, to be honest with you. Well, at least if we can, uh, she said, who's on the river commission? Um, so there, there are dues, they're written dues, and she said, we, yes, yes, our recommendation is.
They're pretty consistent.
Yeah, yeah, I cross abortion, it's just regular dues and there's been no change.
Okay.
So, yeah, they said.
I don't worry about this.
I don't think so, that's what I was.
Jesse Klingonbill sent, sent you, and I know I was CC'd on it, about wanting to get another representative from Kent. That's not really going out, so. It needs to go on, it needs to go on.
Yeah, okay.
You have a lot of stuff going on right now with the, with Wild and Scenic.
Yeah.
They could use the manpower.
Yeah. Couldn't get Steve on there.
Steve resigned.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll do that, we're having another news line coming up this week, so. Check out its spelling and grammar.
You can do, like, help your town.
Joyce, I talked about that, they could be kicked out, you know, it's kind of like stage stuff, you know, it doesn't stick it up. Sign up, sign up people for it automatically, hey, you're the winner of one, right here.
Our next section is, yeah, turning speeds.
Teagotfesia, I have some information on that, if you're, if you're saying, would you even visit us? Um, just, only, I think, met him once, and that was a long time ago, I think, obviously, he knows you, so. Um, we, we are covered by council, we are totally covered by council right now with Perkins and Coey. I went back with them the next day and I said, did I read something right? And, and yes, we're a co-council to us and town, or the. Kind of, to Kent School, correct, so talked to Jeff Cattaldo, there's no issue with, like, one or the other, you know, like, they're gonna get cut. We're gonna cut out of the deal or something like that, it's not what I agree with Perkins Coey, they're worried about Coke, Coke, and then Kent deciding to go in one direction, make it. Improbability, but it is an example only, not to say that they decided to cut a deal or something differently, or, as I said with the, like. I don't know if I told you that, but the, the COG had made a inclusion in one of their economic development campaign documents about Scata Coke. I caught it, oh, yes, it was not good, I caught it, talked to Randy Vella, actually, after I kind of went back to the COG thing, said. Oh, well, we didn't realize what the challenges involved it, especially that one, so all that wording was removed, a different thing was added, yeah. Thank God, normally you don't always read the acknowledgements, you know, I was interested in their five pillar, their five areas of coverage and the pillars and that, you know, it's just nice. It was a good start by, or good start on the economic development, regional thing, but. Then I just went back and said, no, let's read what they have to acknowledge, but, and I saw land acknowledgement referencing. Well, potentially could have been something not good if it had gone out with our name on it, you know, so anyway, so we took that back, but so that all happened, like, right after the. Literally after our meeting, I went back upstairs reading stuff, saw that, well, called Riston the next day, got hold of Randy, called Washington City, I talked to, to the Jenna McLean. Who's a woman I mentioned that was doing that, she's the one that Jean had introduced me to and so on, and we knew Jeff was leaving. Uh, I think Jeff wasn't quite up to speed on who was taking over, but so as far as that legal thing, that was our own copy now. So I talked to Jenna, and she said, oh, yeah, things are okay right now, and, you know, they do have their lobbyists and lawyers, the, the Scatico Tribal Nation. Going to visit Senator Blumenthal, an office, all that, nothing has come out of it at all. Uh, they're aware that he's been supportive of maintaining status quo and not, you know, supporting the non-trial recognition piece. So she goes, so you're, and I said, well, our budget is around twenty, is that, well, it's anywhere between eight, uh, nine thousand and eighty thousand, it could be, potentially, like. Whoa.
But that, is that total?
It could, yeah.
Like, and?
That's what, I mean, that, that could be, if, if there's litigation, that there needs to be something going, if it comes quickly.
But I mean, that's the total, or that's the total we would be responsible for, you know, because we're sharing the costs.
Yeah, in our, yeah, right, we're sharing the cost, so right now, she thinks that's a good number to keep there, and if. Again, if something hit like it did before, if we needed to raise money or come up with some contingency funding, we would have to look at that.
So which side's line two?
That's actually.
No, it's actually, it's, it's in a special line to transfer.
I was gonna say, no, it is not transferred, yeah, it's in the last year.
It's twenty thousand and, like, last year, it was thirty.
Last year was twenty.
Well, I mean, the current year is twenty.
Right, correct, yeah, oh, yeah.
Year four down, here's thirty.
That's a line three eighty, correct, so.
But I remember asking Barbara about that, and, and it sounded like, unless I misunderstood, that that is not like a. It's not a non-lapsing fund.
No, we have to, no, that has to be each year, we have to read out.
So it's not like we have a pot of money that we can go into.
No, no, and, and I don't know, I don't know, that's a good question, if we needed to do that. But again, right now, you know, I couldn't go and say, here's a reason why, like, you know, more financial, like. Um, but, yeah.
So anything that doesn't get spent out of that just goes back to the danger fund.
And, and we do, they have billed us on some of that, I don't know, I don't know the current thing, but we did get a bill for forty nine hundred, which was, like, for the first three months or something. Because of my talks, because I'm tearing over, and it's what you're going from Jeff, the big thing is getting whatever doc we to add, but. Perkins Coey are, are, they're like experts in this, and that was the other part, and I talked to Randy and Jenna, and I said, you know, if we had to, would we go to get one? You know, anybody who's, you know, is an expert in that?
So he was a wasn't personally, no one person?
We do, we do, that's Jenna McLean, that's Jenna McLean.
We don't have anybody who's just representing.
No, okay.
The town like Kent.
Correct, you know, and Randy's aware of this, and, you know, but it's a litigator, and Brady is not the guy, he said, I'm not the guy. I don't litigate as much anymore, I don't wanna litigate, but that's a big thing, is the litigators, like Jeff said. So we need to, Jenna is, um, I don't think, I think if something came up, we would have the time, and Jenna would have the time, either go in with Perkins or Coey. To work off that, or herself, she is a litigator, she has dealt with this, and, and when they mentioned Burton Hills was a Utah tribal thing. She was the one that worked that, she does a lot of the national stuff, but she has, working with us, so she is about as knowledgeable as anybody who said, Jeff, we even said that. Okay, that's why that plans, as well as, um, the gentleman, the gentleman from the Attorney General's Office, the same thing, yeah. So they're all using her right now to get out for, for the state, you know, you love April, the state, of course, but, you know, they're gonna do that.
So you're pretty confident that we don't need to have somebody representing town in Kent?
Yeah, independently, I mean, no, I don't think we do that, like, we need to have that, I see Jeff is, is fine with what we have. You know, what we're doing right now, and our relationship with town, because we're all kind of intertwined, it's the state the only one that's. That's a different, could be a different, it's like, well, hey, let's do something, like, change or whatever, I don't know that that's the case, but we are pretty well set. And the state member, Jeff said, the state did come kind of kicking and screaming into the, into the suit at the time, and, but, so, talking to Mr. Dyker, to the Attorney Dyker. Um, you know, they're okay, as long as everything's fine, you know, they're right behind us, right with it. They're with it, yeah, I, I think we're okay, and, and Randy said the same thing, he said, it's, we're okay, we don't need to bring anyone else up, pay them to. Said, no, I do nothing right now, or maybe nothing at all, if, if, depending on what happens with the Bureau of Recognition or the Tribal, Tribal Recognition Association, whatever the heck the group is called. So, but I think we're okay, now, as far as other lawyer fees, um, yeah, that's, we've been using Randy a bit, obviously, the new. Administration, losing people here, and we're always giving for voyages and just talking to, we haven't done a lot with selling High Watch. And, and the, that voyage I was telling you about, we had, that's done, we're done, we're, we're settling that, it's agreements inside. Uh, that Randy worked out, so that voyage thing should, should withdraw and, you know, that there, so, anyway. And then we have, as far as I know, outside of some litigation that, um, Park, right, Parkland zoning, Parkland zoning has. With High Watch to actually see if they can go to Supreme Court on their issue with the greenhouse and the permits and what they've done. Um, if you're, if you're interested in that kind of stuff, I, I'd like to read Legal Briefing, that was a pretty good one. But we'll see whether or not the state decides to take that up, or, or just say, we're gonna go with what has been approved by their, done by the Department of Health, but anyway, um.
So anytime there's a lawsuit, that goes under litigation.
Litigation, right, yes, yeah, that was the amount of money we spent. Well, High Watch is.
Even when all the lawsuits were under budget.
Yeah, exactly, well, yeah, it means, the increase, is a little increase, but I think. I mean, he, you know, yeah, everything is, you all know, you need to deal with it, litigation is, we're getting more litigious at, at times, to be able to go and, and as. Well, of course, I'm finding that out, I mean, you know, it's a nitty gritty, once you get past it, you know, and actually look at the day to day, what was on each town and what happens with everything from. Vehicles breaking down, if somebody, you know, falling down the sidewalk, whatever, um, you gotta be covered, and. Thank God, we're pretty good with, with, I think, what we have, we've had good litigators, um, I know we have, at some point, we need to, um. Re, re-up our contract with the lawyers, the cream, you know, I asked, and you guys agreed to, and I really appreciate that, giving me a few months to see how it is, I think we're fine. I really appreciate my relationship with Randy and others, they've been responsive, um, yeah, a couple times, you know, and call back again, but he's on the same with me, but. But he's always been really responsive, when I asked him after our meeting the other night about Scata Coke, he came right back, I was wondering, we were talking, and, and then I called. When I asked her after our meeting the other night about Scotty Coke, she came right back. It was more than thirty more and we were talking and, and then I called Jenna. He recommended I call her right away to make sure. To, to see her perspective and she called her. I sent her a note. She was actually traveling and she called me back. So we've got good response and good support. So I, you know, I don't see. You know, there's been a couple of lawyers, somehow I guess the law community finds out. So I got solicitations about, hey, you know, if you're looking for an offer. But I like to, you know, we all, we all like the locality of the local, uh, support we get. So. Um, yeah. So I'm pretty good with, I think what we've got here as far as the legal fees and, uh, attorney's fees.
So we are, you are proposing increasing the legal council line?
Legal council line just because of what we had so far. And I think we still have some big potential coming up. I don't want to, to get short and have to go back and, you know, ask for more. Their rates go up like everybody else's rates go up. Um. So. Tell you later when the doctor, the lawyers, because. We're using a position.
So do you want us to, um, be approved of this?
We can approve that, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we approve the, can we just do like the section?
Do five ones.
Zero five one. Attending speeds.
As stated, you know.
As, as presented.
I'll second that. As presented, as requested. Any more discussion? All those together? All the, yeah, the four parts together, yeah.
Zero five one, zero zero zero.
Yeah. Okay, um, hearing done, all in favor?
Bye bye.
Okay. Okay. It's me. So I, I, my bowels are getting that a little late for you.
Really? Are we doing it again or higher term?
Oh, yeah, I always work to do that. Yeah.
Did they send?
Uh, they didn't say anything more, only what they submitted to us. I mean.
Didn't they submit them?
Um, they've submitted their, their, uh, it's all their fees and such for that to me. Yeah, we're.
Seventy two.
Yeah. Right, quarter way. Yeah, the current, um, yes, actually these numbers will be corrected to the three percent. They requested.
I was gonna say that's.
It'll be great percent, three percent. Barbara knew that was going to happen anyway. So she just left the, the requested on, uh, but we, you know, had done that. So, um, and the only change, um, yeah, was, was that four percent versus three percent and. That point zero eight percent social security, which.
And nothing changes with the audit because we got one more year.
Correct. I know.
She said that if we answer one more year.
Ours.
Monitor. Yeah. You were late to that meeting, she.
Oh, did she? No, we, we talked it with.
No, I mean, she didn't say that when you weren't in the room.
Interesting. Cause I, I thought, well, they're, okay.
Yeah, she said she made a mistake when she spoke at the previous meeting.
Okay.
Cause I had asked that question, you know, and she said.
Same thing, but what we're.
Yeah, so there's one more year, which makes sense.
Okay. There you go.
But we can't really, we can prove it.
No.
To the three percent.
Yeah, we, exactly. So we'll have that calculated. Then I want to say. Yeah, there's, again, yeah, there's a lot to, I mentioned about, you say, oh, no change really. Actually, that's going down a little bit of the request. For a little less hours, I guess. Thanks. Now you're on topic, but my post lives through.
Yeah.
Get a chance to read them up.
I did not get a chance to read it.
Yeah, you can, you can, you can just chat it out.
So I, I wondered, I have a couple of questions. I wonder, so I just want you to verbalize. Why are we doing this now? Because you told everybody else.
Right.
They're not, we're not going to deal with this kind of changes.
Monetarily, you're talking.
Monetarily, and I mean, I saw, I read what you said about, you know, five hundred dollars, which I think, but you're not hitting us up with it for a lot, I mean, but. We're not, we're not talking about changing anybody else's job description at this point.
No, there's no, they're, they're going to be updating job descriptions and they need to continually subdate job description. That's what I looked at, you know, so to speak, in my own house of, of what she. What I look at her responsibilities, what I'm asking her to do more, and take more leadership and, and more, uh, uh, direction on that, you know, things to, to make sure our. Our, our, as a board, that all of our materials are, are correct when they get out. So we, you know, I know we've been up and down and. For all kinds of reasons, but I'm, I'm not. Team, uh, Joyce and I talked, so we need, we need just to, just to clear up and figure out something better. We're still, I think, still, she and I are still dancing around trying to. To get our battle rhythm together and how we think. So that's part of it. But, um, just watching her go through her daily routine just today. Besides, uh, spending a lot of time with, with people that wish she would normally see. I mean, she was off with her grandson today. Um, then there's a lot that she does and there's a lot that are as important. I believe it's as important and should be recognized at a department level. So a, like we have the department, so like a town clerk or whatever. Um, and that's where really it's going now. I totally want to incorporate all the administrative support she gives us. There's no change to any of that, as she does as admin assistant. We took her job description, her duties and responsibilities. Kind of changed it a little bit to, to what I saw her doing, what I think she needs to do. I mean, there's so much more complexity. That I even imagined, uh, just on a day to day to keep up with things. I can't keep up with everything that comes across. I, I appreciate that, you know, when you are looking at things like that. Um, we did most of today and then you brought in, uh, what we're doing with steep and we looked at steep before. We were working with Barbara. We put it on the back burner for this month because she was on vacation. But yeah, but you know, but those are all things, but in, but if you guys are, if you. Happen to get a job and you're, and you're busy doing things, you know, we're glad for your eyes now. I mean, it would always, but, but there's more things I need her to take, take charge of. I spent a lot of time on. The phone trying to organize bigger things. Um, it's the, the details that are important, um, like a regulatory process. You know, we have to make sure the accessory does everything the right way, that the planning and zoning is done within the zoning regulations, uh, that the clerk does everything according with the state rules and regulations. She's in that same area and, and some are more specific, but and some are more specific to the town, but also building up the relationship, um, and the responsibility that she has. Um, recognizing that, um, continuing to ask her to step up. She's one of those people that are on longevity and, and down the line, we need to look at that. But, um. I just look at her responsibility as not an admin assistant. And I've looked at others. I've talked to other selectmen about their admin. They keep them very narrowly focused. Um, you know, Sharon, um, a person is really, you know, works with the board, but probably does more things that are directly with the, the first selectman. Others do, do, do more. Warren tends to do a lot more. Kane does some more, because it's part time, you know, first selectman. Um, but they're not left to actually, um. Take over and, and, and run with more of the things that I would like, uh, the individual in that position to do, whether it's Joyce or anyone else. Um, and so to hire someone that actually would be someone that would run the, our offices, run the, the day to day, you know, all the different, uh. You know, administrative things, the budgeting things and so on. Working with Rick, I mean, she has a lot of work with Rick. There's a lot of stuff we don't, again, you know, we don't see everybody doing everything.
I know.
And that's important. Rick spends a lot of time over here. People criticize him for that, but he's actually working with her, working on, uh, on, on sending out, um, purchase requests. Doing a lot of, uh, RFPs for, for vehicles, chasing things with Rick, helping set him up so that he isn't spending as much time here as necessary. I know he's done, he's done the same thing with, with Samantha and to get to a park and rec. I mean, she spends a lot of time helping these people get up to speed and, and, and making them be successful. And the other part is that, uh, working with the other department head, um, not that, I think personally and personality wise, she, no problem. They, everybody gets along pretty well, I think, you know. Uh, you know, whatever, but they treat her as an equal in a lot of ways. But I just think, um, to have the position to be called the Director of Administrative Services, to expand it when. When we went to the cost, we actually said, went to the Director of Administrative Services table and talked about that. They thought it was, she's a great idea. They, they don't see more people stepping up in what they are. If you ever look at Dan's website, here about a lot more stuff. I would like to keep a lot of that out of here, but there are a lot of things that I think that we need to do and. And the day to day running of stuff, uh, you know, I need to rely on her more. So I need to, you know, give her that professional courtesy and, and. A little bit of conversation was only to make it at a director's level. If you decide not to fund that, um. You know, I'd like to, but if that's part of the issue, then I'm willing to wait and, and do that. But I think just to do that and, and, um, and I talked to Barbara about that as well. Um, you know, so anyway, so that's kind of my background, what I, I've looked at and, and what I really want to grow this position to be more, um, with her experience and so on. And, but also anybody's experience in that job is to actually step up, uh, the game a bit. I mean, I'm not. I'm not, you know, and then we talked, I'm not always happy with how things get through little things that we should be attentive to. Not that she's not paying attention because she's an administrative assistant. But we need to all of us get together and, and just tighten up up there. So understanding your specific responsibilities, is it my job or her job? You know, you ask who's responsible. When I come with you, I think it's mine now. And, and I read, I go out, you know, an hour or two before, maybe I'm not pointing out my, you know, like my rhythm down and stuff. But I try to make sure there's stuff here, that we have the right people, that people have called back to come and, and visit with us. But. Uh, like the thing with, um, with, um, with, uh, Jesse mentioned, yeah, he sent it to me. I'm like, yeah, we gotta get it. I talked to Jesse about it. I saw him walking one day. And, and that just got on the back burner and got buried probably.
But that shouldn't be your job.
Correct.
Shouldn't be your responsibility to do that.
But I took, I did not send it to her necessarily in the beginning. Um, I should have made sure that that went through to her and that, that she followed through or as the admin assistant. So. You're right. It isn't my responsibility, but if we're going to ask people to step up and do more, I think that, that needs to be recognized. And a lot of that comes responsibility, authority, and then accountability. So accountability in there, but you know, accountability is important. So anyway, that's, uh. Kind of why I backed it now. I just wanted to, to start that process as we, as we go into a budget season, uh, make it, it's been three months, it's a hundred days, you know, you kind of pretty look at stuff. This is one of the things that. You're right. That shouldn't have to be my responsibility to make sure it's a hundred percent through. But if I don't have the, you know.
Let's say if somebody, if she's, if she's CC'd on something, when, when this position is CC'ing something. Um, I would love to see sort of initiative.
Correct.
Like trying to take things off your plate, you know, and saying, and like, I'll take care of that. You don't have to worry about that. And same way with, you know. Putting out things on the website and the emails. That's, that position should be trying to take things off your plate.
And, and they have, but I, and to be honest, uh, I kind of wanted to do a lot more so they could get into it all. And, and there's been things that I haven't followed, like I said, that one, Jesse was a specific one. Um, I should have turned that over and, and no, you know, and just followed up and got the response. We've talked about our own battle rhythm to have more time to actually sit down and talk. We kind of, and that's part of what I said about some of the movement. Um, it's difficult. I go back, I don't, she's gone, she had to run out to do something.
Yeah, well, that was one of my questions is, 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 is it really possible to do all of this in thirty hours a week? I, I really doubt that it's possible. I think, I think this position needs to be a forty hour a week job. And I know, well, she, you know, she's been doing this job at this rate. She's going to want more compensation to go forty hours, but I mean.
Yeah.
I just don't see how all this can get done in thirty hours.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, it is a lot of it.
And there's no reference to how many hours this job is.
No, I didn't put that in there specifically because we're still talking about. And, and she, you know. We've had that conversation. And Joyce, if you want to jump in, I know, I said, don't worry about it. I'll take that. But if there's anything you think I'm not quite getting, uh, together that we've had talks about, we had talks about, you know. Potentiality of having more hours. I think right now, um, we haven't moved it because of this. Not that I don't think she won't be held and doesn't herself, wouldn't held herself to wanting to, to up the game a little bit to, to make sure some of this is done. I think she has. That's why I went to her before I even brought this up. I said, is this something you want to do? Because I will expect, I'll expect more than sold everyone else. And how do we do that? How do we make that work? And yet, you know, it's part of us having to work together. So that's, you know, it's my realization that a lot of it that I was doing, a lot of phone calls and stuff, calling through. Um, you know, I would CC her or Barbara in a lot of ways and, and maybe they just said, okay, give him, there's room to see what he wants to do and come back to us. And this is where I'm starting to come back and say, okay, we need to, you know, I need to offload this. I need, I can't focus on this. We need to build that relationship and build that team. Again, it's all a, a review of the process like anything else, but. But, um, yeah, you're right. I mean, we've talked about, you know, potentially, potentiality of hours having to be reduced. And, you know, so. I think she just wants to spend more time with her grandson right now, but I understand that too. But, but, you know, but the reality is that we have to look at, um, and how we, we do this and how it's compensated and so on.
If, if I could say a few things, um, I, for the last two plus years, I've had the privilege of working with Joyce, uh, you know, as selectmen here, we, uh, we chat, um, not here all the time certainly, but, um. Uh, I, I'm, you know, I, I, I'm pretty aware of how, before she works. There's a lot going on that, you know, as you, as you just alluded to. Um, and, um, you know, even in the summer, I mean, uh, you know, she, she took her time in the summer helping out with the food scrap program at the transfer station. Uh, so, uh, we go out there helping folks. Um, she did all the work, uh, along with Rick and everybody. So, um. You know, and, and, and she has, uh, been very, you know, faithful to this town for a very long time. Um, I didn't see the job description. Uh, I got this like a little late, so I'm just looking at it now. Um, but, um, but what I did was in preparation with this meeting, I just went to Sharon, Warren, Goshen, Salisbury, Washington, Sherman. I went to the local towns. Just to see what the title was of, 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 of the people who might may or may not help out in the, um, selectman's office. And, um. You know, in, uh, in Sherman, it's, it's the same title, administrative assistants. Uh, Salisbury, the same. Uh, Washington, uh, there seems to be two of Joyce right there. Um, in Sharon, uh, it's called the executive assistants. In, 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 in Warren, the same, there's an executive administrative assistant and an administrative assistant. And then it seems Goshen, uh, it could be off, but there's, there's nobody there, it seems, at least on the website. Um, so, so from, from my point of view, and I'm, I'm looking at this, I'm looking at, it's called the Director of Administrative Services. Yeah. Okay. So, um. You know, so, so I, I'm, I'm not, uh, I'm definitely not opposed to the idea at all. I mean, I, I want to help this office, you know, I mean, if, uh, if, if this helps you and Joyce. Uh, you know, Joyce do her job better, uh, helps you, uh, I'm a whore. Um, but what, um, what I want to make sure that we do, that we justify all of this. That, 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 the, the title of the position is definitely different from the other towns. Um, I don't know if these other towns, that's just the job, that's just the title. Um, but. Is, is this job description that I'm looking at here, is this similar to other towns? Like, does the other town have this job currently?
There are some consistencies and there's some, we're trying to, I'm trying to grow this a little bit more. So there's additional things like additional grant work, because we're going to be talking, we've all been talking about a lot of grants. Barbara's going to be able to do some. We're going to need to do some more. So, um, uh, relate, um, associating things like grant work. Some of the administrators don't do anything with grant work. They don't do anything with buildings that's done by public workshops. So there's other elements that, that, that is, they're different here. Uh, because we have maybe a couple more buildings than, say, Goshen has, or I think Sharon, um, has, you know, they have the school, but they, they have that one, the town hall. Um, so there's a, a few differences that we do here as well. But generally in the administrative piece to it, it, it's pretty consistent. Like I said, I, I did not want to. Uh, think that we're going to drop, she's going to drop administrative support or any other administrative work that we need to really do the day to day. I mean, to make sure we have the answers, meeting the people. Um, you know, following through, that's our big thing is to take care of the people that come into the town hall, um, and, and answer the phone and be there. Uh, I wanted to make sure that y'all, I said that that is not going to change one bit. But the other, more administrative, more taking charge of things, more, you know, helping out, uh, with, with, you know, um, let's look at, um. The Squirt House and things like that. Um, you know, and, and we brought that up before, Lenny brought that up before, of, we have money and we need to get things done to fix stuff and, and do the maintenance and repair. Or it's defined, but no, they do the maintenance and repair and actually make sure that's done. She knows that that is something that she's going to have to work on more. That takes oversight. She's going to have to work with the contractors. Get the RFPs, bring them in, bring them up to us to, to review or whatever. And then, and then actually follow it through. And you're right, she did all that. She learned a lot of this, doing by that food scrap program. Understanding how that all had to come to work and all that. And there's more things as the HRA goes and how we go with, uh, you know, potentially unit base pricing and other stuff. So there's going to be more oversight of that. So there's some, we should think I want you to take, to take charge of as well and, and report back to us, obviously, work with us to, to. Define parameters, but you know, give her an opportunity to, to take charge of some of the things that go day to day here. So again, that we, we know, have defined responsibilities and accountability.
No, so in, in, in a year in which we are adding a cemetery committee with a sextant. In a year in which we are considering a rec leader for Park and Rec, another position. Uh, in a year in which we have decided three percent raises across the board, except for this twelve thousand five hundred, which we're going to somehow review with people.
Right.
Um, we're, we're considering some big items and some big changes here. Um, so knowing that. I, it just gives me pause that we're, we're, you know, we're considering some really big things here. Do we want to move on this? Do we want to inbound? Do we want to? Perhaps wait a little bit and see how, you know, the job unfolds, if we're going to look at all the jobs together, if we're going to look at that pot of money.
Well.
So I mean, just to, you know, just say that. And, and then, and then, and then just to say this, that the biggest thing for me is, is if, 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 if I'm. if I can look at a current job description, and then I got this job description, which is good. And if I can see very clearly what the, what we're asking of this position, what exactly is it, you know, based on a previous job description? I mean, there's a lot here, I just didn't have time to look at this, I saw this real quick to me. But if I can see something really clearly that, again, delineates what is new about, about the position, how it helps you all, I'm, I'm more inclined to, to look at them deeply, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure you understand, so reclassifying a position, it's not adding a new one, it's not doing anything else. I had asked for a couple dollars more because of, the department had the premature of giving a department head thing. But if that's not where you guys want to go at this point, because we, we're talking about a compensation, I understand. But all this is reclassifying as an admin assistant.
Why now? Why you want to reclassify now and give her a raise now?
Well, first of all, secondly, if we're going into the ninety, a hundred days to review stuff, I want to make changes and not wait on those, because before something else comes in, this is something that I want to challenge it for and, and actually have this individual and this position step up. Now, as we go into Steve Grant's season, as we go into summer construction season, as we go into where we want to give calendars and maintenance schedules of roads and things like that, all that's gotta be coordinated with Rick, that's what, part of what she's going to be doing. You know, all those promises we've all made about, and, and we've heard from people that they want more communication. I hear that constantly, they'd like more, okay, so, and, and maybe it's different, so.
Waiting a little more to me right now.
I, I think it's, it's not a matter of anything more than, this is the time I personally look at this and would like to work with her as we come out of the, into, and out of the budget season, into the new year, to get ready, the new fiscal year, to get ready to go, so.
So, it's not a change of the job?
It's a change of the job, but it's just reclassifying, it's called admin assistant to director.
It's reclassifying.
It's, it's recognizing all the things that she actually does, it isn't just admin assistant. And there's the, and there's other, there's an older two thousand thirteen admin assistant, you know, job description that probably needs to be updated. I don't, no, that's a, that's the right one you've used, but I've looked at a couple of them, and it did have those before. And Joyce, when I asked her to give me some input to what she does, what she thinks she's done, that is different. And I took some of that, and that's when I rewrote that and redid, and then I did the classification of her administration and the budgeting and all that, tried to define a little bit more of what she's actually doing in those, in those areas. But now, it's, it's, you know, I don't see benefit to waiting right now for me as an administrator. That's, that's, you know.
You want to get some efficiencies in the office.
Exactly, I want to get some efficiencies, and I told you before that, you know, I've been here a hundred days. I mean, I'm getting, it's committed another hundred and eighty days before, I really understand which door to go in sometimes. But I think if we, we start doing this, and we all build together, and we can improve together. And I look at the board, I like this board, I mean, I like the experience that we have, what we bring, what we've always talked about, and where we can go and where we can, you know, these were nudged in town a little bit. But we also need someone else that can be out there with us, getting that administrative done. So, helping that and having that position there, not, again, it's not another person, we're not hiring anyone else. We may be able to get interns, I've heard some others, like you kind of know as an admin teacher programs of, you know, a master's in public policy and things like that, that might come in, public administration. Others, schools, undergraduate programs that come up for a while, help out an IT program or whatever, a campaign. There's some things that, that I haven't pushed either Darlene or Joyce on, but the University of Westcott has funding through Catholic's Organization of Career Services to fund. And they, and I think, well, GTD took an option out from someone from the university, who paid, they pay a certain amount of hours for that person, and then if you want it more, you have to pay, you know, more. But things like that, I think that we can get some additional support, because there's a lot going on and a lot that we need to look at. And a lot we need to organize and then start calling. So, that's part of where I want that experience that Joyce has after seventeen years, of looking at how things were organized or not, potentially, and then holding to that, get her ideas out there. I think she, you know, I'll be honest, when we had these discussions over the last couple, a month or so, maybe a little bit more, she's been a little reluctant to get in my way and say, okay, let you do what you, what you want. But, you know, so I both had it a couple times, and she's had to come in and say, hey, where are you going? You know, and so, so if I, if I can now move past that, and we can actually start doing that, I just see it as a benefit to getting done now, to getting ahead of the game a little bit. And, and to the point that you bring up about other towns and what they have, I'll be real frank, and I always felt that way about, about Kent. I, I care about other towns in a part of the cog, but we lead, we have led in so many different ways. You know, the library can say, we lead in so many different, I'm ready to lead this. Everybody has consistently kept the, you know, I went back to fifty years of looking at what we called it here. And I talked to, oh, you know, my, back when she started as administrative assistant, it's the same thing, same title, same kind of job. And, and every now and then it would change because of the experience and so on. But it was always kept as, you know, you're an admin assistant. I don't want people coming to town and feeling like I'm dealing with an admin assistant, that's part of it. You deal with Joyce, you get, you get anybody here in this town, there's no, no matter what the title is, you get people that are willing to stand up and, and, and support and so on. But I want people to know that we are, are leading, that we are looking to the future. We're not gonna be trailing or chasing as much as we can, I think administratively, that's my look right now. You know, and I think we got, like I said, all of our people are strong. Park and Rec Matt has been a great asset, just off the bat, he's energizing with social services. We see so much more, I just want to, you know, take that and keep running with it, you know, get on the top of that way and go with it. I like, Kent leads and, and I always believe it will. And, and this is just a different way to approach it.
I can appreciate that.
And I've had experiences in my background before doing that, taking people there, or whatever, and moving them out, moving in positions to watch it and go, even I've been there for a while. I mean, I had a lot of stories, but there were a lot of people, when I first moved my civilian job, I left the military, went to civilian jobs, whole different world, to cover what you expect when you're in a uniform and of regimentation to, you're still dealing with unions, you're dealing with civilians and so on, I've been there. And it was, it was a different experience there, but it took a lot, it took a lot of pushing people, getting things going, hiring people, you know, saying it's not the right fit right now, move on, not that we're gonna do that. I think, I think we're being a good, a good organization here. So, anyway, I, I think we want, I want to get Kent to lead, I think this is a good start to show the town and everyone else that we appreciate all the administrative stuff, but all the other things that they do and, and more, you know, let's get more of us. But not, I mean, more in the context of being prepared and more too. I hope people, and that's part of organization, so.
I do, I do have a question about the concept of her being a department head. I see you as the department head. I don't understand how she could possibly be a department head. I can understand you wanting to have her have a different title, I get that. But a department head?
Well, only, but I was gonna ask, like, yeah, what's the, does the relationship change of how, like, I mean?
Well, if you go throughout.
How would she be the department head of the first selectmen?
This first level. Of our office and administrative services, because she does, the, all that stuff that she's doing with all the other stuff, all comes on her first selectmen, that's huge. I mean, that's, that's more, I mean, that's, that takes into account, well, Public Works, working with, with money, such budget treasurer. So, she actually works, I think, maybe, maybe assessor, although we have to, you know, she's looking at grand lists and stuff like that as well. I just look at it as, you know, again, what, what I've looked at, what everybody keeps saying about, you know, the first selectman being a CEO-like individual, I, I don't really care about the title per se. But if that's the case, then it's, that's a chief executive. So, there's everyone else underneath, there's, and people have their own departments. I mean, CEOs don't screw around with CFOs. I mean, that financial piece, especially with Barbara, would never screw it out of that. But having her on the same level and able to actually be able to work and represent us out as.
So, is it like a new department then?
Well, it's, yeah, I mean, it's really, I think it's recognizing what the department, what that position has become, which is really a department of all the administrative services that we provide, which, you know, I didn't do all the budgeting and the employees' maintenance and so on. So, it wouldn't be anything more, I mean, it wouldn't be any, it wouldn't be a separate department, it would be under us. But she would, I mean.
I guess that's, and I.
As a department head, you know, it's just the administrative piece that she has, that she does it under the selectmen. I mean, she does a lot of, she does a lot, so.
So, I, this may be semantics, but I do want to know, are we, is it the select man's office or select men's office? Because we are the select men's.
Office.
So, that is the name of the.
Yeah, it's like, I think it's a selectmen's office upstairs, yes.
With an E?
Board of Selectmen, yeah, Board of Selectmen, I'm sorry.
No, there's.
Well, I, I, you know, did we slip that, so. Well, so, yeah, I mean, the board, I don't, you know, help.
Did she review this?
Yeah.
A lot of type of.
There were one as well, really?
Yes.
Well, I want to do a spell check and type over it.
I mean, I want to see some, I want to see more attention to detail on things like this, on meeting agendas, documents that we're putting forward to the public. There has to be.
I agree with this, I agree with this.
There has to be, you have to have a level of excellence. And then type those, just tell them, they make the wrong message for the public.
Surely, like, that kind of really, you know.
So, the other, so that, I asked that question. The other question I had was this line that says, "In the absence of the first selectman, assumes assigned administrative and organizational responsibilities, both internally and externally." I don't understand what that means.
Okay.
Like this, she's not gonna take over your job when you're not there.
Not at all, she's got his responsibility in that. But there are things like, if I have to go to a meeting, if I'm talking to one, we're looking at EV meetings, about potentially, the cog wants to talk about EV, how the Conservation Commission is looking at, that we have Wendy in there. It's a, it's a four hour off and on kind of a discussion they want to have with the CTDOT about stuff, you know, where they potentially can go. So, it's prepping and representing to get, gather information. Decisions were made, absolutely, there's no chance, I mean, she will only make, she should again, be making decisions to help us make the final decisions, getting the material together. So, going to that meeting that's coming up, I'm not gonna be here, it's like the eighth or the, that week after, and I'm not here at all. It's during the middle of the day. It's a, people from the cog want to hold that meeting and find out about potential funding, which for the EV corridor and all that stuff.
So, she's gonna represent you?
She will represent us, right, to get more information, because Wendy will be there, I believe, she's planning on it anyway, as a Conservation Commission, she's on that.
But is that gonna require making decisions?
It's all just information gathering. No, there's no decision to be made, it's, they want to get out more information to us. So, again, I don't want to miss something that, there's a key intervention. So, I, I need to be able to say, hey, attend this meeting, and she did something the other day. It was two o'clock yesterday afternoon, there was a meeting on, on how we can outreach more to our community. And I'm like, yeah, I'm buried on a phone call, something else was going on. Can, can you just cover that? So, she did, she thought it was more of a sales pitch, but they had some, she's going to get, she actually requested the, the whole presentation to be sent to us to look at it, if there's something. So, that's the kind of stuff that, you know, I want to be able to say, you know, go do that and, you know, take that, that out. But no, no, she's not, she's not like a deputy mayor and all that stuff, or, no, no.
I mean, and, and I just, it just, though, I think the wording might, maybe could be better. Because like, I just, when I first read that, I thought, he's, she's a non-elected position. There's no way that she can, she can, you know, she can't replace the first selectman as a non-elected position. I mean, I would think it'd be, it'd be smarter to have one of us be, if there was a decision-making thing, it'd be smarter to have.
Oh, and I'm out of town, the second selectman, you'll get tomorrow. Good, so, yeah. Oh, no, yeah, it's, no, it gets grounded in our, in our rules and regulations or not. No, she's only to represent, like, okay, would you go to this and listen to this meeting? Or would you, you know, go get that information on that? And she brings it back, she does that now, I mean, she does it now for a lot of stuff. But, but just, yeah, so rewrite, you know, the, I'll, I'll take any editing and rewording. Well, so.
I think it's representation.
Okay.
You know, I think it's, you know, attention and representation, that's what you're talking about.
Yeah, 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 we can do that, so.
The other wording thought that I thought was a little odd was this line that talks about develops and maintains complex restricted filing records, da, 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 and it goes to adjust information to improve readers' understanding of information.
Yeah, that.
I didn't understand what, what is the reader?
That was probably my ten thirty at night, slam a couple extra things in there. Yeah, that can be, we can, we can adjust that. Some of this stuff I tried to, you know, there were so many, we could have gone on and on and on, little thing, you know, like, but kind of tried to.
In the same way, like, the, that maintaining and posting office hours, that seems like such a trivial thing to have, you know.
Well, it'd be, well, I mean, there are people, well, when people are on vacation or going for part of the days to, you know, limited hours, we get the town clerk, she ended up having to do a lot of work to make sure that they understood when Lynn's, her life was gonna be there and what her limitation was on the office hours. Things that she could do that Darlene had to do, but Darlene's on vacation. We don't have a lot, you know, backup people, so when someone's out, someone will take it over. And, and that's kind of what, what that was, maintaining the office hours and stuff, so. But we, I mean, some of that is, is, has been in there forever. I mean, or the old admin stuff that I didn't change.
I guess that's the other thing, it's, it's kind of feel like running away, that I'd love to see what is the old document compared to the new.
Yeah.
Just to be able to compare, I don't know what's new and what's not.
It's, it's really hard for me to even talk about any of this, because I don't, I don't have the old one in front of me, and I, I'm seeing this for the first time here.
Like.
So, I would, I would, yeah, I would like to go back and forth and then.
Yeah, totally.
And then, like, provide, I didn't know if this was new, provides training and support as required to all clerical staff assigned to town boards.
That's kind of, I noticed that she talks to other town clerks or clerics or boards, make sure that they, they know how to work the machinery, you know, the technical side of it, that there are issues about who writes, actually writes amendments or, or proofreading all that submitted, and she's been working with that, so I threw that in there, it's something I observed that she was doing.
Okay, okay.
So, it's important, she's not in charge of.
I think it's great, I mean, I do think we need to provide training and support. When I first started, I asked her about that, and I've asked her about a lot of stuff with, you know, bringing in. But like, I asked, what do we need to do? And I still haven't been told that I need to do a certain amount of training.
Yeah.
And I'm an employee of the town, and I think that I have to be doing certain things, like sexual harassment is one thing. Everybody has to do that, according to state of Connecticut, so.
Well, yeah, there's, yeah. So, I would, I, I. Well, this is, again, I want to introduce it to you guys, I definitely want to say this at some point. It's not, like I said, it, it doesn't have to sort of be a budget thing, but I just, I wanted to get into the budget time to, to look at that. I mean, it isn't, you know, the latest one that I did ask Barbara.
It is, I didn't see it.
But, you know, we can all.
So, it's a this.
It's a draft, okay, yeah, exactly, it just came in.
Yeah, just like.
So, again, but really, it's, you know, I think you've heard me talk about why I think it's important and why I'd like to do it at this point. Again, you know, I think at the level of a department, meaning is she, you know, because we have appointed and elected, we have all, and hired, you know, we have hired people as well at our different levels here. So, her as an employee, a long-term employee, would just take charge of and be responsible for anything else. So, as a department head, you have to be responsible for everything else that goes on. So, if you, if you're putting together a budget, right, from us, and there's something that's left off, you've got to make sure it's on, you need to be reviewing it for you. And we've talked about that, because there's times that I have asked her, you know, so I don't think I was prepared for the meetings I should have been. Did you know, and you're like, okay, maybe I could have, so we were talking about re-changing that battle rhythm. And I use battle rhythm only because, it's a term I use, but, but yeah, but getting things going and, and really working out, as you said, Lyndy, getting things better, better for the public and, you know, it, yeah. We don't want to make, we don't need to make silly mistakes, we need to work together to fix that.
So, I had a couple of questions, like, why is, why is the nutrition site listed under, you would mean maintaining in accounts for expenditure? And there's also the senior center, like scheduling for the senior center. Like, why wouldn't those two things be some of the senior centers?
I think it's only if there's things outside the senior center needs. Let's be honest, we're on the record now, it hasn't been as strong.
No, but I mean, don't we want to hold the person responsible?
We do, and we will, but again, to make sure it gets done, and overall, to make sure that things like building, it's, it had to be mostly with the building flow of people back and forth, making sure that's all done.
I mean, if somebody has it in their job description that they're managing the senior center, they need to be managing the senior center. And I would think the nutrition site, I don't even know why we're using that reference now. Yeah, because I think that should be called the senior center.
Yeah.
Because the only.
Nutrition center.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I just think that's really important, that if somebody's responsible for something, it's.
I agree, I agree. I agree.
And I would like to see her, I would like to see this position being much more active with the town newsletter. I think that's an appropriate use of her time. And if, if copy editing is not a good, not a good skill for somebody, then they need to figure out ways to get people to help them. I really, I think the town hall needs to, you know, the different, even though it might not be in your job, you know, your department, if you have a skill where you can help somebody, you know, that, that kind of helping different between departments should definitely be encouraged.
Absolutely.
Because normally, normally helps the town, the town, townspeople and the townspeople. The better product that we're putting out to everybody.
Yeah, we can't do this alone. That's for sure. I mean, we need everybody's support back and forth.
I would like to see, under the facilities, I would like to see a plan in writing. I think that's really important. Some of these grants actually require an annual cyclical annual maintenance plan. And so we should have that. We should have a plan for the Swat House and we should have a plan for the community in town hall.
I agree. That's something that we definitely talk about kind of what we consider. We have some money in, I mean, it's, I think, to her credit, you know, it was like, okay, where do we start here? Do we go there? And, and okay, you know, so we have to get away from being frozen by what can happen next? And what are we going to have to focus on and so on? It's just start doing. And I think when you start doing, other things fall into place. It just, you know, but yeah, we don't want to be frozen in our tracks on, on not getting things done. Waiting for, you know, the perfect, yeah.
We can, we can discuss about the file, possible $500 bump or whatever we decide. I'm looking at the latest budget here and there's, there's a discretionary 12,500 that's in there. And the worst likely budget is still under, you know, negative 0.500%. So even with that.
Yeah, with the health and, and we actually use the, we actually talk, we really look at. Issue, of course, you know, the issue with health is that the, we kind of, or a bit of the mercy of the guys in the union, you know, with their health plan and their, the health, health account, HSAs. Some state plans I know, because at the university we have an HSA, small one. This, now the school didn't have one when we went to the state plan initially. Again, it's changed all the time, but we need to, that's a part of what we need to keep up with and things like that. And that's where Joyce did say she needed to, to work on it because we can't find, it had been in the past, found significant savings. But without losing any kind of healthcare or, or support and so on.
Yeah, it sounds like this is, we're at a point now where we really have to look at it closely. Because if we're so small, I can't believe we're getting a good rate.
Exactly. Yeah, the, the number of towns have been significantly, not that we want to be the, the one to bury them, but if, you know, if that's the way it goes. I mean, I'll, you know, I say that a little bit flipply and I don't mean that to hurt anybody's feelings or anything.
But we have to look out for.
We have to look out for, we have to look out what, what we can do. And if, if there's a way we can, I know that the education association is a, is a union in itself as well. But if we were to hook into that, that only expands again the numbers we have in our, in our pool of healthy individuals, which is what the insurance rates are all about and expand it. And that was, you probably remember from now, $80,000. We had that change over two years. I mean, that helped out a lot. It helped our budget a lot. Yeah. So I think if we can do that, yeah, help people and keep them going as well. It looks like I'll probably end it with that play too. My wife is actually tiring.
I heard that last night. Oh my gosh.
All right, well.
Can we have a little more time?
Absolutely. No, no, I, I just, I wanted to give a, I thought, say, give me a little bit more time to talk. And I wanted to, I did feel it was a good time to bring it out. I don't know what, a better time.
Oh, no, this is great. We have a very long discussion.
But yeah, and we have, we have actually more time than even, you know, next couple of weeks or something to look at it.
Would, we would like to bring this up again at a meeting. Do we want to know which one? Do we want, do we care which one? Do we?
Yeah.
Do we do it on Monday? So we have, we have Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Right, schedule. Then Wednesday is, is where we're going to call back and say, okay, you didn't show up or, or you didn't come in and talk about your, you know, $12,000 or your, you know, your $4,000. And, and if we can get, if, if they can't come, at least get a response to those questions. Did you, you know, is everyone called towns? They had that 66% increase. You know, what is your plan if you don't have that? What specifics it can't, that, that makes us have that number if it's, if we're a different numbers anyway. And, but I'm hoping that individuals will show up. We've been pretty good about trying to keep it during, many times the transit authority, they're the ones that have a really interesting work schedule. Nobody works after two. That's the type, I mean, they probably work early in the morning. But yes, but anyway.
So looking up, just like you have the schedules for these meetings.
It's noon on Monday.
It's noon on Monday, 6:30 on Tuesday. We can get the, and then the agenda. Okay. So we have the agenda there. And then sort of following, so they can Wednesday for this. There is right there. So we've got Wednesday, special meeting.
Yeah, if there's anything else, we.
Budget discussions.
Budget discussions. We kept that one specifically because of following.
So that, so we can follow up with this.
And that one, we can follow all of them.
You should adjust, adjust the agenda if you're going to want to talk about this, because this is not just budget.
We can, we can.
This is not just budget.
There's much more than that.
Absolutely.
Yeah. But it's time, you know, just got to resubmit.
Yeah, we can.
Wait, we have talked about that.
Oh, yeah.
So we can, we'll cancel.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, let's talk about this.
Okay, I think that's, I think that's it.
You did everything.
37 rate. Thanks. Perfect. Okay. Anything else? If nothing else, any public comment, anyone care to, to join in with anything? I think Lynn was on. Hearing nothing then for public comment, I'll move to accept the motion for adjournment. So move. All in favor? Thank you. Thanks, guys. Appreciate you.
Thank you.